Okay, everyone, we'll get started. Welcome. Meetings in session. Thank you, and I salute you for your continued help in the role we're all taking on, helping in our organization through this. Is that okay, Don? Let's begin with the pledge, as we often do, trying to maintain. Everyone, put your hand over your heart, please. And rise here for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again. I welcome you, and I say to you, the superintendent and ten remaining staff have continued to lead us and our organization through these most unusual times. They've been effective and caring and responsive. Tonight, we assembled to fulfill our normal role at the committee of the whole meeting ahead of our regular meeting. So first, I'll turn to the superintendent and ask him to put his first item up for information purposes and then discussion.
Sure. Before I turn it over to Teresa to go over our education plan, I just want to take a moment to thank Bee, Teresa, Karen, Angie, Neil, and Erica for really pulling all this together on such short notice and actually doing it remotely. Also like to thank Tim and Jenny. They've been with us throughout all of this, giving us legal advice and guidance along the way. And although we would prefer to do this instruction face-to-face, we think is that this is the best plan that we can put together to continue instruction through the end of the year for our students. And also, given the prediction that there's going to be multiple waves of this illness throughout the next 12, 18 months, this will give us the ability, if we have to, to very quickly move to remote instructional, if that's required. So with that, I'll turn it over to Teresa.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen here, hopefully.
It's up.
It's up, thank you. Okay. Let me see where I can find this. Okay. So I'm going to start at the beginning with some guidance from PDE. This is actually from PDE's website. So I'm going to go to my first slide and talk about Pennsylvania Department of Education and strongly encouraging all schools to provide some type of continuity of education for all students in the most appropriate and accessible ways possible, while also honoring the governor's guidance for aggressive social distancing of at least six feet between individuals. Also known that evolving United States Department of Education guidance implies that IDEA and other federal protections still apply regardless of schools offer continuity of education or The definitions of instruction for PDE, schools may provide continuity of education through one or a combination of the following options. The first one that I have listed is planned instruction, and that's formal teaching and learning similar to that which occurs in a classroom setting. Within this process, teachers use planned courses of instruction of new concepts and skills aligned to grade level standards. We're not quite there yet, and I'll get to a slide with a timeline in a minute. Enrichment and review. Enrichment and review consists of informal activities that reinforce or extend students' prior learning. New standards and skills are not addressed through this option. This is what we're currently doing with our teacher webpages and our packets. This tells us about how instruction can be delivered, again, through PDE. These options can take a variety of forms, including online digital learning opportunities, non-digital learning opportunities, for example, materials sent home to students, and other approaches designed in partnership with local IU's and regional PTAN centers. The decision to employ one or more of these methods is made at the local level based on feasibility, availability of resources, access, and equity considerations, and in accordance with aggressive social distancing guidance. So on to our plan. So planning to move from the enrichment phase to the planned instruction phase, fourth-quarter skills and standards will be addressed through a project and/or units of study developed by teachers. Instruction will be provided through Google Classroom and/or any other district platform a teacher may already have in place for current students. Plans for projects and/or units of study will be submitted to the building principal in lieu of weekly lesson plans. All projects and/or units of study must be submitted with assessment criteria. Students will receive a complete satisfactory or an incomplete for the unit of study. And finally, students who do not complete the projects and/or units of study satisfactorily may be required to attend summer school if the order to close schools is lifted and/or may be considered for retention based on the overview of all progress during the 1920 school year. So not just based on the unit of study or project, but all progress for the school year. It's a very broad timeline. So beginning today and ongoing, we're starting to train teachers on Google Classroom. Principals will lead building ILTs, grade-level teams, special education and content area teams, and virtual meetings to establish essential skills for planned units of study. Provide check-ins as units of study develop, those are for the principals. April 6th through April 17th, teachers will continue to post enrichment and learning opportunities through their websites while transitioning to Google Classroom or other district platform. Teachers' plan or planned unit of study or project for the next phase of instruction. April 20th through June 4th is when we will go live, essentially. Students begin units of study, projects with direct virtual instruction and guidance from teachers. And then from June 5th to 11th, we'll return to the review and enrichment phase to assist in transition to summer, and this will also give teachers the opportunity to assess the projects or units of study for the fourth quarter, which is essentially April 20th to June 4th. Moving on to special education, I'm going to pass this off to Angie.
Hello. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Angie.
Okay, great, thanks. So we feel that the majority of our students, we think about 85% of our students, will be able to receive their services through the Google Classroom using a co-teach model. And actually, since Brian sent his letter out, we've gotten some feedback from some of our teachers already. Some of them have experience with Google Classroom even as parents because their own schools that their students attend have been using it, and they do think that that's going to be a successful model for us, so we're happy to hear that. And our specialized teachers will be providing accommodations and differentiation, differentiated instruction for our students via that Google Classroom, and while they're still having their students access the general education curriculum as well. We think approximately 15% of our students are going to require something more extensive, so those teachers will have to have their own page and make more extensive modifications to the general education offerings. Some students within that 15% might need even something more intensive. They might need more concrete materials, and teachers are going to have to be in more close communication with parents to make decisions about what types of learning activities would be most appropriate for those students. Our related services, BHPT and OT and those types of things, we think we will now be able to provide via teletherapy, direct service, because the governor relaxed the license requirements for that, so we should be able to do that for our students. And if we can't do it that way, we'll do it either by phone or some sort of internet consultation with parents. And then once school resumes, we're going to need to meet with our, all of our parents individually to make decisions regarding whether or not we need some sort of compensatory education as a result of the school closure. So as far as our ESL programs and our gifted support, again, the ESL teachers believe that they'll be able to provide support with a co-teach model, and for some of them, they might need to have their own page as well, where they can assign, they can assign more language enrichment types of activities. And then for our gifted support, also, the gifted support teacher will be able to use a co-teach model as well to provide enrichment and advancement activities for their students.
Well, before we move into technology, is there any questions from the board on those two pieces? I would just insert a question in a general way to you, Superintendent, and then welcome any questions from the rest of the board. Give us an outline of how the logistics of directing and accomplishing instruction happen between here, down through the building principals, down to the individual classroom teachers and into the classrooms. How do we organize that? How do we, how do we logistically accomplish that? Just in a general way, I think Angie hinted at some of it, but could you just speak to that concisely?
Teresa, could you address that?
Sure.
With the principals.
Sure. So, John, it's been a lot of Zoom meetings. We've met with the principals a couple, actually, we started last week, just some overall conversation. We met with all three groups of principals, I believe it was yesterday, at each level, to get their feedback and talk about the steps moving forward. And after Brian sent his letter to the staff this morning, the principals were given the green light to start to schedule meetings with their ILTs and their grade levels and their content areas and their departments to start to get the ball rolling. There are additional, we provided them with a template that they could use and some additional resources in helping them move forward with their groups. And, and the principals have been holding almost, well, daily with each different grade level, they've been holding Zoom meetings ever since we've been out the 13th.
That's what I was hoping to hear, Teresa. I just meant, as the ball gets rolling, as you put it, I just wanted to be sure that whatever, and this has been ever-changing, and I know Brian has had to adjust his intention several times and timing of it, but just, I want to get an idea like how it's carried out, if the principals are in constant contact with their people and getting feedback from them like as best, as close to normal as they could do and attempt to.
We initially were looking at it district-wide, setting the standards for elementary, middle, and high, but as Teresa and Karen started looking at each individual building, everybody's in a little bit different place and has a little different need through the end of the school year, so we quickly shifted to more of a building-based approach where the buildings, the administrators and our ILT teams are really going to drive what's going to be instructed here over the next couple of months.
I have just seen so much caring, responsive responsibility carried out by the people here in the administration, and I want to believe that every single teacher is and will buy into the same, you know, view of their responsibility as best they can. Ms. Pickens has something to say?
Yeah. Yeah, so I have a question. You guys mentioned co-co, or co-teachers for the ESL class and the gifted, like what is co-teaching, what does that look like for the ESL and the gifted students? And what is their accessibility to Internet? Just looking at things being just, you know, equal and equitable across the board, how does that look for them, especially since they'll receive a complete or incomplete?
Can you still hear me? Because I lost my video.
I can hear you now, so if you said anything before that, I couldn't hear it.
Okay. No, I just started talking now. As far as the co-teach model goes, I mean, it's not too different from what our teachers do now, really. I mean, they do work in conjunction now. They work together with the regular, you know, our special education teachers, our gifted teachers, our ESL teachers, they all work now in conjunction with our regular ed teachers because we do have to give all of our students access to the general curriculum. It's just that some of our students need adaptations and accommodations because, you know, they are not quite functioning at the same level as their peers, and some are functioning below that level, so they need differentiation, you know, in the other direction. So it's really just the differences. They're doing it now remotely, and before they were doing it, you know, in person and face-to-face, and it's just a different, you know, different type of a thing that they're going to need to get used to, but they're already working on it, and they already seem to be excited about it.
So this is something that, are you saying that teachers are working to get used to it, or do students have to get used to?
Oh, well, the teachers, I mean, you know, it's going to, this is going to be something different for them, you know, to do this remotely. And yeah, of course, the student is going to be something different for them as well, but you know how kids are with technology, they're a little more, you know, savvy with it than some of the adults are, so I don't think it will be as big of an adjustment for the student side as it will be for the, for the teachers. But like I said, we've gotten already, since Brian's email this morning, we've already gotten some good feedback from our teachers, so we're excited about it.
Well, yeah, no, I'm really more inquiring on regards to the student side, because if they're, you know, for the ESL and the gifted students, I mean, even though they're younger, everyone isn't always like super savvy.
Right.
Some are just like new, so I'm just wondering like what happens with them at home?
Right. You know, as a matter of fact, we did actually get some feedback from one of, from a couple of our families, actually, that are ESL and special education, and some of those families actually said that they would prefer to continue with more of a hands-on packet-type model, so it's not as though we're going to force it on everybody if they don't feel comfortable with it. You know, we're going to work with people individually and meet them where they're at, and, you know, if they find that the technology route is not going to work for them, because there are, you know, some people who that probably won't be the best approach for them, then we'll work with them, and I've had several teachers say they'll do whatever they need to do, and they'll do whatever it takes, so we'll meet those people where they're at.
And I think, too, it's important to remember that it's not going to be perfect as we move through this, and we've tried to build in a lot of flexibility to make sure that different groups of students have different ways to get across the finish line during this last four, last quarter. So we, again, instead of shifting to more of a daily or weekly assignment list, we're looking at task-based assignments that they have to complete by the end of the school year. Again, providing for flexibility, for example, with technology. We know that, you know, we're going to work very hard to get everybody access to the Internet by April 20th, and we're going, and Neil's going to talk about that in a minute, but we know we're not going to have 100% coverage by then, so, again, giving this flexibility and time to complete these assignments by the end of the school year will, again, hopefully get everybody the, at least the opportunity to complete these and move to the next grade.
I had a question.
Angela.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I already emailed all my questions. I don't know if you guys just see them, Brian. And some of them were my questions, and some of them were questions, like I said, like people like Erin and other people have called me and sent me messages asking, you know, really good questions. So Angie kind of touched on one of my questions that was in the email that I sent, and that was for special education. As a parent of two children that are in special education, a lot of people and advocates have been, you know, messaging me, asking me about the technology, like, are they going to have access to some of the items they need? You know, some kids, like, say for instance, I have iPad, so I can download, you know, some of the apps that the teachers sent me, but, you know, some of the other students have those, you know, devices that they use at school, like, my kids also have iPads at school, so if they don't have, if I was not a parent who was able to get my own iPads, how would they have access to that? And that's the, that's the type of thing that they use to ask to go to the bathroom or for food or, like, because they don't speak. So I had a lot of parents that was concerned about that type of thing, you know, they got, there's other students in their classroom that don't speak, or there's other things that they might have in the classrooms that they don't have at home, that they use to communicate with or to work with them or teach them with, and that was one of my questions as far as special education. And there are also a lot of parents was concerned about their students who, they really don't understand some of the work that they got to do, and they, you know, some of the kids expressed this to me, too, like, what am I going to do if I need help? You know, what am I going to do if I don't understand my work and my mom can't help me with my work? You know, what type of support? Is there any type of extra support that's going to be available? You know, I know, like, some teachers are more apt to, you know, answer an email quickly or, you know, right on top of things, but then, you know, if they're overwhelmed and they are, you know, a lot of different students every day because they rotate, you know, how long would it take? Or, you know, what kind of timeframe is it for them to get back to them or to assist them or, you know, and also with these assignments, do they, I know they're more a pass/fail, I was reading, you know, how you're going to be doing it, so if it, my question is, if it's pass/fail, it's kind of, you know, you know, to me, how black and white is the pass/fail going to be? You know, is it, if they complete the assignment but it's all wrong, does it still pass? Even because they may not have understood it and needed that face-to-face instruction? Or is it just kind of like, the teacher reviews and determines, okay, oh, they might have completed the assignment, but it was all wrong, so it's still a fail? You know, so those kind of like slippery slopes that we might slide on to know whether, you know, you know, the child is going to pass or fail, even though they might have put, they put forth their best effort, they might just not have got what they, you know, got the assignment that was given to them. So that's another one of my questions. How does this pass/fail, you know, is there some type of scale or regulatory tool that is going to be used to determine if the child completes the assignment, do they pass or fail? Or is it just if they complete it, they pass? So that'd be another one of my questions. And then also, is there room, you know, for, you know, Erin in Grace Church is offering, you know, like, to coordinate things for like, I know we were talking about like the school lunches, you know, you know, you know, delivery and things like that, you know, they're asking and, you know, offering to help. Is there room for somebody like Serviery to come in and do anything? You know, if kids don't have, aren't savvy enough to, you know, get their Internet hooked up or to hook up their Chromebooks, you know, can some of those volunteers be in assistance in, you know, you know, helping some people that might need something or even helping the district in trying to distribute some of these items? I know, like, you know, a lot of parents are like, I didn't get to get my Chromebook, you know, can a, can a agency or, not an agency, but a, you know, a service like Serviery, can they help distribute those Chromebooks or, you know, that's another thought that some people were throwing out to me as well. So those are kind of like my questions. And then my last question was, and I brought this up before, I got a lot of parents that are very concerned about prom and graduation. At this point, I personally don't feel like we're going to be back in the building before the end of the school year. So is there, and I asked for this before, but now that we have gotten to this point, are there some tentative dates that we can put out there? You know, September, August, you know, where we can say, hey, look, so parents, parents and community members can stop making that date of when the prom could be. Let's do our own prom. You know, I feel like if the district coordinated a graduation that's pushed back, not, you know, a ceremony, not the actual graduation, but a ceremony and/or they coordinate a dance for the prom, that it would bring everybody to feel more together in the situation than everybody feeling like, oh, you know, this parent group feel like they're going to do a prom for the kids, this community group feel like they're going to do a prom for the kids. I feel like the district should take a lead, take the lead on figuring out when they're going to push prom back to, and when they're going to push the graduation ceremony back to. So I know that was a lot, but those were all my questions.
I'll try to address them, Angela. You threw a lot at us, so let me know. I guess we'll start with prom and work backwards. We're just, and the graduation, we're just not there yet. We just, just today sent out information on the instructional piece, and we just need a little more time to pull all that together, but I promise you, if we have that up and running, we'll start to take a look at that. So I would imagine towards the end of April that we'll be able to start addressing that, but I agree, I think that's something that we need to address as a district and work on and provide some opportunity for district celebration. Again, I don't know what that's going to look like under the current circumstances, but it's something we do need to work on. As far as volunteers, we've received a lot of requests for volunteers. At this point, we don't feel we need any help. We have the staff in place to, to deliver the meals, to deliver, to hand out the devices, but again, if, you know, if anybody, if you want to direct them to me, and then if we do in the future need any additional help, certainly we'll reach out to those individuals that have volunteered. Grading, pass/fail, again, I think what we need to do is address, you know, again, remember that this is going to be flexible, and we're going to need to, you know, again, with our teachers, talk about flexibility and leniency, because this is all new to us, you know, certainly, you know, you mentioned somebody completes and it's all wrong, certainly we don't want to fail anybody, so we do want to give every student an opportunity to try to address it, and again, that's why we built in these projects instead of specific assignments. As far as getting additional help, we are going to require all our teachers to have virtual office hours, either by email or some other means, so that if students do have questions, they will be able to reach out and communicate with their teacher to get that additional help.
I can take the issue about the assistive technology, Angela. I mean, if people do not have their technology at home and they need it, we recognize today, we talked about that at Brian's daily update meeting, about how teachers are probably going to need to get back into the buildings now that we're going towards planned instruction, and they're going to need to get materials, and we could probably use that opportunity if, you know, parents need their student's technology from school, their iPads or whatever their devices were, we could probably use that time as an opportunity to get those devices and figure out a way to get them to them. Assistive technology consultation will continue with our IU consultant, so, you know, she'll still be consulting with parents on the use of technology in the home. And, you know, we did do a survey today, a lot of the teachers have been touching base this week with their, with their families about their technology needs, so hopefully we'll be able to get that all coordinated, but they're, you know, they can always contact their, their teacher to let them know that they need access to their technology because they don't have anything at home for that.
Thank you.
And as far as devices, too, we do have, we send out information today to the families that, we do have 400 families that did initially sign up for devices. We're going to reschedule those starting on April 14th. Also, starting on April 6th, if anybody needs a device or needs Internet access, we're going to ask the families to call the IT department at 874-601, and they'll be open from 8:00 to 3:00. So we'll, we'll begin to collect that information. I always, I feel like we have enough devices to provide those to students, but the Internet is going to be a challenge. Again, Neil's going to go over that a little bit. You know, I think that we have a couple of ideas to actually expand Internet across the city, but a lot of this is going to be coming down to a case-by-case basis as we talk to the families and determine what their needs are.
Superintendent, and one of your messages to us today, or very recently, you mentioned setting up a call-in number for questions and concerns. Is that, is that going to be mentioned later by someone, or do you want to speak to that?
I'm not sure we have that in the presentation, but we did talk about that today. Erica, do you have information ready for that?
I do. I do. We have that, that phone number is going to be up and running by Monday, and that phone number is 874-6090. It's going to be, again, up and running Monday, and it will be staffed Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:00, I believe.
I just thought that might solve some of the concerns Angela McNair expressed about volunteers and about people with specific concerns and questions. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Rosemary?
Darlene, thank you. It's okay, it's hard, you can't see me. I just have a question for Angie. Angie, are we going to utilize the IU for any other services?
Yes. Yeah, we will. We're still going to continue because we contract with them for our physical therapy and our occupational therapy, our...
for our physical therapy and our occupational therapy, our, um, visually impaired consult, you know, um, that type of thing. Yeah, so we still will need to do that.
Okay, thank you. I, I realize that, I believe the state is giving them extra, um, support, I believe, and that we might be able to access things through them, so.
Yeah, we're definitely continuing that relationship.
Great, thank you.
We actually have a meeting with their team tomorrow at noon, uh, just to review our continuity of education plan and talk about how they, they can assist us with that.
Great, thanks, Brian.
Anyone else? Brian has more to present, but he wanted, he asked for any questions at this point. Okay, Brian.
All right, uh, we'll turn it over to Neil on technology.
Okay. So as Brian previously mentioned, we had about 400 families that had already signed up requesting a Chromebook. Uh, so starting today, I believe, we had some secretaries calling those families and rescheduling an appointment uh, for the week starting, uh, Tuesday, April 14th. And then as of Monday, we'll start taking new requests for anybody who was not able to make an appointment previously. Uh, we believe that we have enough devices, as Brian said, to cover all the families who are in need in the, the city. Uh, the, the bigger, um, project is, is going to be the internet accessibility. Um, so we, we're basically going to attack this in two separate ways. Um, so we know from doing a survey of our buildings that seven of our buildings already has decent internet capabilities in the, in the parking lots. So families would be able to go to one of the parking lots and they would be able to connect to our network. Uh, Rick Vitale and the IT, uh, department will be, uh, installing access points in the buildings where, that they've identified as not having good internet, uh, capabilities. So that we can increase the footprint outside of the building. So we'll have that as a single option. Families can go park in the parking lot. They'll be able to, to connect to the internet so they can at least get the information they need to complete the days or the week's work. The bigger project is something that, uh, we're hoping can really get off the ground. And that's the idea of, uh, providing free internet service to everybody in the, the city footprint. Uh, so I know that VelocityNet and the Innovation District had been, uh, they put together this plan where they would like to see everybody in the city would get free internet, um, service. And so we will, uh, work with VelocityNet as well as some other community partners, uh, so that we can identify how we can actually put radio towers on our buildings, on other buildings, so that we can actually give those families free internet from their house, um, so that they can access the, the, the school, uh, documents that they need. Uh, this wouldn't be through our network. This would be on VelocityNet's network, uh, which is a little bit easier for us because our network is going to be a little bit more secure than an open network through VelocityNet. Uh, but it also would increase the ability for all of the homes to get internet in the city of Erie. And it's, it's, I'd say that this, the, the plus, if there is a, a plus side to this entire thing, is that this, whi- which was a wish list, I think, a, a year or two ago, could actually become a reality because this is the, the world that we're living in and we need to make sure that all people in the city of Erie are connected. Um, so as, as we get that information from the families, uh, we'll ask whether or not they have internet accessibility and then we can at least try to start mapping out the city so that we know where there's more of an internet, uh, desert than there is in other places in the city.
That's impressive, Neil, thank you.
Mr. President?
Darlene?
Uh, Neil, so I had an extensive conversation with the county executive about this the other day and I don't know if you guys have reached out to them yet, but if you haven't, I, I think maybe you might want to. I know that they were also going to be, um, having discussions with Verizon as well to see what they could do to support the school district to make sure that all of our students have internet access.
The, um, CARES Act that was passed by the federal government also, um, divvied out money to each state. And so there will be a, uh, grant opportunity that opens up on Monday and closes next Friday for technology. And so we'll, we'll, we'll put our heads together and we'll definitely apply for the grant with the hope that we would be able to use some money to get more devices for those families. But I think more importantly, this project of getting internet across the city should really be at the top of the list.
I agree, thank you.
Hey, Neil, I, I did see that Spectrum has free internet at least for 60 days as well. Families that have children from K through 12, I don't know all the details, but I do know that's available.
So that's one of the options that we have, uh, that we can send that information to our families. There's a couple of things along with it, um, that we would want to make sure our families completely understand. Uh, number one, it is free for 60 days, but after the 60 days, if they don't call and cancel, they'll automatically start to get billed. Uh, the second thing is that all of the surrounding areas, Spectrum, uh, Armstrong, which is out where I live, they won't enter your home to do any of the installation. So basically, they will send you everything through the mail, the router or any of the devices. And so you internally in your house have to make any connections and they'll do every, they'll do all the line work which is outside.
Anyone else before Brian goes on with the next thing? Brian?
Next is communications with Erica.
Hi, everybody. So, uh, really, uh, the communications team throughout, uh, the closure has been really responsible for, um, managing our, our media requests and also providing, um, daily information and updates and resources to the public, um, via all our channels. And that includes our Facebook page, our district website, and the One Call telephone system, as well as the Erie Public Schools app. Um, so we have been using all of those, um, platforms on a, on a near daily basis. Um, we have, as part of our efforts to kind of reach all or as many families as possible, we have created, um, several, um, distinct websites, including an online public portal where we are consolidating all our updates. Um, we also have created a dedicated webpage for, um, staff resources. And, uh, each week that we have produced our supplemental educational packets, we have also posted those online. Um, we are continuing to, uh, do the daily work of supporting, um, communication production and content production by generating flyers, graphics, signage, basically anything we need to help get, um, our, our message out. Um, this has been, uh, an interesting challenge because with things changing so rapidly, sometimes several times in the course of a day, we have not had the, um, opportunity to send the letters home to all of our families. Things are just changing too rapidly. So we really, um, relied more heavily on our Facebook page, website and the One Call system than we might have in the past. Um, we know that some of our families, our ESL families, um, we are working to continue to try to better reach them. We are translating, um, many of our most important messages regarding meal distribution. Um, today's online, uh, message regarding online instruction will be translated as well. So we are, are, are trying to reach, um, those folks specifically. And, um, so far, the public reaction has been, I would say, pretty positive, um, pretty supportive. Um, I think that speaks to the, the plan that was put in place. Um, and also to the, the pretty frequent and transparent communication that's been happening. Um, as we move forward with the transition to planned, uh, online learning, I think that is going to be, um, that kind of communication is going to be absolutely critical. So, um, again, our team will, will help provide the support to, um, to deliver that information to, to families.
I'll just like to say something, Erica, thank you. Um, we kind of are winging it through this whole procedure and trying to make everything as normal as possible. And tonight, we did not pause at the beginning to invite hearing the citizens. But prior to this meeting, we sent out notice to the public that, uh, if there was any interest by any citizen who wanted to be heard this evening, that they could do so. And we didn't get a response, so that's why we, uh, got to this point without mentioning it. So as our meetings progress for however long they do, we'll still try to accommodate that aspect of our normal procedures at meetings. Thank you, Erica. Any questions from board for Erica? Okay, Brian?
But that's all we have for, uh, the continuity of education update. Is there any questions overall on, on where we're headed?
I don't have a question, Brian, uh, but Mr. President, if I could say something, that'd be great. Um, I just wanted to, to take a minute, and I know we could do this at the end, but I wanted to take a minute to acknowledge the enormous effort and response that the district has had to undertake. I can't even fathom taking a primarily brick and mortar district and transferring it over into an online platform in, into a community that doesn't have equitable internet access. Um, we're not even discussing the, the individualized trauma that this has caused on students, on teachers, on staff, on families. Um, that alone is going to be a hurdle in which we as a district are going to have to overcome. But the response that this district has put out, um, I know it, it hasn't been, it's, it's might not be perfect, but I don't know how it could have been and, and given what you've had to unroll in a rapid-fire, um, response time. And I just wanted to commend the team, um, and, and what you have been able to accomplish and what you are going to continue to accomplish because this is unprecedented. There is no rulebook on how we fix public education during a pandemic. This is something that we, there's, no one's done this before. Um, we have other states and, you know, other countries have, have done this. But this Erie, uh, is, is unique in the needs that we have. Um, and I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge what you guys are doing, knowing that each of us are being impacted by this personally when we go home. And so you're having to push through all of that and still fighting like, excuse my French, like hell for these kids and these teachers. And I just wanted to commend the team for doing that and, and thank you. Because I know this has been enormous sacrifice while we're all dealing with this personally. So thank you, the, the whole team, thank you.
I tried to say that, Tyler, but you said it much better than I did. I agree with you.
And thank you, we appreciate that.
Uh, I just have one more comment. Um, I, I agree with you, Tyler, a lot. And I was kind of nervous because I saw a lot of, and I don't know how true this is or not, but I didn't know because I saw parents saying, hey, hey, guys, we can sign up to cyber school. And I was getting really nervous and I don't know, um, if anybody else, um, heard that, but I heard it a lot. And I'm just glad that, um, Brian, you hopped on top of this and got to it quick, um, before, you know, those type of rumors or situations started occurring, you know, that the district hopped on top of it and said, hey, we have cyber, you know, we're going to offer cyber classes. So there's no need to move around. So I just wanted to, you know, throw that in there, you know, that, you know, I was excited to see that, you know, we were able to hop on top of it before, you know, people felt the need to do something different. Um, I know some people, and I, I, I personally see Erica or whoever's doing like the Facebook updates and I get calls all the time from the schools. You know, I do, I do have parents that, that saying, oh, we need to be more transparent. But I, as far as I can see, as soon as something happens or as soon as the governor makes an announcement, um, I see an update on the Facebook page. Um, and shortly after, I get a call. So I don't know if some people are dismissing it or not, but I know that, you know, when, when people are saying that to me, I can honestly say, hey, did you go even take a look and see to go get the information? You know, so I, you know, I appreciate whoever's keeping social media updated, um, because that's a huge, important thing and a lot of people are looking at social media for updates and whoever's doing it is doing a really good job. Because literally, like, I get the notification from the governor and literally like five minutes after that, I see an update on the Facebook page. So, um, whoever's doing the social media updates is doing a really good job.
Thanks, Angela. Brian, did you want to go with your next thing?
Sure, okay, sure. Uh, typically, this is the night where we bring you the first draft of the budget. Uh, however, due to the impact of this pandemic and the recent economic shutdown, uh, we feel like we need another week to pull everything together for you. Um, there's, we've had a lot of discussions this week on how to present this to the board because there's a lot of uncertainty out there right now regarding tax revenue. What, what's that going to look like over the next year? We know for certain that we're going to see a, a pretty big dip in our earned income tax as a result of the unemployment rate. Um, the, the real question right now is trying to figure out how long that's going to stay low and, and when it's going to come back. Uh, another big concern is how this is going to impact the state budget. Uh, the governor did come out in February with, with a proposed budget that had several increases for us and other districts across the state. Uh, given, again, the economic shutdown that's occurred over the last several weeks, they may have to go back and readjust that. And we may not get all the, uh, the increases that we anticipated for next year. So we, we did have a good conversation with PFM this morning. They're still engaged with us even though we don't have a financial administrator. Um, they're going to start working on projections for us. And what they suggested and, and what we're going to do for you for next week is to present to you, uh, ranges of, of possibilities. So we're going to present a best-case scenario, a worst-case scenario and a mid-range so we can start to really wrap our arms around what, what this is going to be as far as a challenge for our budget for the next, uh, next school year. Um, and the financial plan, as you recall, also included a 2.46% tax increase. Under normal circumstances, I would present that as part of this budget. Uh, but in light of, again, the economic downturn and the, the impact that this is going to have on our community, I'm not going to bring that at this point. So we're going to bring you a budget that definitely is going to have a bit of a deficit in it. Uh, but, but I really think that, uh, before we make any decisions on a tax increase, that one, we need to, uh, get our, our projections updated so that we can look at how, how the budget and the, the next five years would look if we, we determine that we're unable to, to do that tax increase this year. Uh, we're also going to bring you a, a number of different options as far as, uh, ways we might be able to balance the budget without the tax increase. Again, that, that's not ideal and certainly not in align with the, the financial plan. But, uh, again, given the, the magnitude of some of these challenges, I think we need to look at all options. So we'll have all of those items for you, uh, we're planning for May. So next week, we'll give you worst case, best case and mid-range. Uh, we'll take the next month then to really take a look at the projections and, and look at some different options, which we'll bring you in May. Hopefully by that point, we're going to have a better, uh, better look at what this is going to, to be over the next couple of months. And, uh, again, as a reminder, we have until June 30th to make a final decision on the budget and any tax increase.
Questions, comments, board members?
Brian?
Tom?
I, I'm, I'm assuming the operational costs have to be similar or with students not being in the, so maybe we'll realize some of those savings? Or, or does it cost us more having to ramp up all of the cost of, you know, the, the, uh, technology and so forth?
That, those are the things we're trying to finalize right now. Well, we know that we're going to have some savings in overtime lines, uh, savings definitely in substitute, uh, teachers and other employees. Uh, we, Neil and Tim right now are reviewing all of our, uh, service contracts and, and looking at whether or not we need to adjust those, uh, whether or not these, uh, companies are continuing to provide a service or if they aren't, you know, renegotiating those through the end of the year. And, you know, and in some instances, instances when they're not providing the services, we would have some savings as well. So, so again, we're gonna, we'll, we'll have a lot of that done by next week. Um, probably not all of it, but, um, again, I, I just stress that things are moving very quickly and we're going to have to be flexible over the next couple of months as we finalize everything.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Brian?
That's all I have.
How about construction, did you have something on that? Is there, is that something you want to talk about tonight or have? Is that something you want to talk about tonight or have?
Construction. Neil, do you want to give a quick update on collegiate?
Yep. So based on what PDE sent out, as far as any building that was under construction that they deemed, that we would deem to be critical in nature, we, I gave EE Austin, after talking with Brian and Tim, we felt that it was a good idea to move forward with that project just because the work that's going on there, the infrastructure in the promenade, the leaky roof, the masonry that needs to be repointed. So that was something that is critical as far as the infrastructure of that building. It gives the contractors almost a full two months so that the project can get finished if and when school returns back to normal, starting with the 2021 school year.
I think that's better than I would have expected, Neil, is that the employees of EE Austin and the other contractors are able to safely execute their work and not be at risk.
Yeah, I think, I think that based on what I've learned over the last two years on school construction, I actually think that the extra two months should help to get it done. The area that I'm most concerned about is actually the roofing. Just knowing how you tear off one of these roofs, typically you'll have four guys standing shoulder to shoulder, ripping off the, taking off the slag, which is the rocks that hold the roof membrane down, ripping up the insulation. That's the most efficient way to get a roof off is to literally go shoulder to shoulder and move forward and getting rid of it. So the roof is probably going to take much longer than anticipated. But the fact that they'll be able to start doing the work sooner and they'll be able to work first shift, starting, you know, this month or, yeah, in April versus having to start that in June, should give them enough time to be able to get the project completed.
And they might, they'd be wearing protective gear anyway.
Yes, oh, definitely. Especially up on the roof where we know that there is asbestos, well, pretty much all over the place. So they're definitely going to be wearing a hazmat suit, basically, when they're up there.
Thank you, Neil.
Mr. Harkins, if I may add to that, that Mr. Brockman has put out a notice to the contractor that any of the construction is to be done in line with the governor's rules for social distancing, as well as in line for the COVID-19 guidelines issued by OSHA and the CDC for critical construction projects. So we have those protections in place, and they've been advised to the same.
Thanks, Tim. My understanding is we're going to have an executive session, but before we get to that point, is there anything else you want us to know or you want to call, discuss or explain to us?
Yes, actually, I forgot item number three, the emergency school code amendment, which Mr. Walker is prepared to present tonight.
Thank you very much. Last week, the House and Senate passed in record time Senate Bill 751, and the governor signed into law as Act 13 of 2020, a law that has significant portions applicable to the Department of Education and the response to the pandemic of 2020, as they call it. Real briefly, what the law does for school districts is the secretary is officially authorized to close all school entities until the threat of the pandemic is, has ended. And it automatically waives the 180-day requirement within the school code. There was a question as to how that was going to be done, and they took care of that legislatively. It also gives the secretary the power to increase the number of flexible instruction days, as well as to waive the application deadline for that. We believe that is important and recommend our clients apply for those flexible instruction days at such point that they submit the continuity of education plan so that the grading can count, so to speak. The minimum number of hours for career and technical education program, the secretary has the ability to waive that. The secretary has the ability to waive performance data required in a professional employee's or teacher's performance ratings. He also has the ability to waive the minimum number of days of pre-kindergarten instruction, the 12-week student-teacher requirement, and the NIMS assessment, as well as the NOCT exams. Additionally, the law states that all public school employees are to be paid in full as if the pandemic had not occurred, and they will receive full retirement contributions. That was a peace of mind for the employees. It requires that all school cleaners and custodians are being provided appropriate cleaning materials and protective clothing and gear as recommended by the CDC. It requires that school districts provide a written notice to parents of each student who has an IEP as to the school entity's plan for ensuring the student receives free and appropriate public education. I know Jennifer Gornal has been working on that closely with Angie Kanaki. As was outlined earlier, each school district is obligated to submit a continuity of education plan that is to be submitted to the Department of Education and then posted on our website. There's no deadline for that within the law. The law ensures that subsidy payments are going to continue to the school districts. It locks in charter payments based on the enrollments as of March 13th, not allowing charter schools to enroll new students during this period of shutdown. It requires the Pennsylvania Department of Education to apply for a waiver from the Federal Department of Education related to the testing requirements under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, as well as the Every Student Succeeds Act. It does also give the secretary the ability to waive any provision of the school code, Pennsylvania Department of Education regulations or standards if the waiver is related to staffing needs or impacts the district's instructional program or operations. So that gives us a wide amount of latitude in order to apply for waivers to overcome hurdles as we see them coming, or don't see them coming. Professional education compliance periods are extended for a period of one year. There are provisions that pertain to the non-public schools. There's also provisions relative to bus contracts and renegotiation of agreements with busing contractors and requirements in order to require them to continue to be paid. So those are the main sections of Act 13 of 2020. If you have any questions, please do let me know.
Thank you, Tim. Anything else? And are we going to have an executive session?
Yes, we'll need a brief executive session for personnel.
Before we do that, is there anything else on the mind of the board members for this part of the meeting?
I have a question, Mr. President.
All right, Tom.
A couple of things. One, am I assuming the school board training is waived as well? I would like that if that's the case.
We have the authority to request that waiver.
All right, that's one. Two, I'm also assuming, once we get on board with getting back to class, we're not going to have breaks, you know, Easter breaks or whatever the breaks are, will we just straight through with no holiday breaks?
Yeah, we, right now, we have our planned instructions starting after spring break, so that'll proceed as it was. And that is actually built into some of our contracts as well. We really haven't discussed what that'll look like through the end of the year. I'm not sure there's that many days, vacation days or breaks, other than Memorial Day at this point, but we'll take a look at that. That's a good point.
Ms. Pickens has something to say? Lori?
Mr. President?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just have a question. This might be for Teresa, and I might have missed it, but is there something that's going to help the teachers who might not be as tech savvy? Is there something in line that's going to help them, you know, like, for those who are not tech savvy? Because I've talked to a few, and I know that that is a real big concern for some of them.
Yes, there definitely is. So we start, we're starting slowly, kind of just building it up. We started with them just setting up the Google classrooms and getting actually into the platform. Then on Friday, through our Safe Schools platform, we will be putting videos and a pretty extensive Google classroom training that is, can be up to about 13 hours, depending on how much a teacher wants to take advantage of. And finally, we have, they're called technology resource technicians in each building. And there are, there are two in most buildings. I think Erie High might have four. So we are advising principals to have folks who are maybe a little uncomfortable with the online experience to reach out to them for assistance as our IT department. And we'll keep an eye on that. Lori, we actually did a survey a week ago to ask teachers if they were comfortable video conferencing. So we have a basic idea of the group that we're going to need to reach out to and provide support.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Hi, this is Gwen. Just basically have a question, not really a question. So basically, we're looking at no third quarter would be counted, we just go right into the fourth?
Teresa, do you want to address that?
So Gwen, we're, we are going to continue with the third quarter. And even though technically it is cut off on the 13th, but let me just talk through how we're going to work the grading. So the third quarter grading is going to be delayed until we can get this all together. We have communicated to the, to all of our employees, actually, that all work due after March 13th is excused. Missed work from March 2nd to March 13th will not count against students, but benefits students who completed it. Students will also have a two-week window beginning April 6th to turn in missing work from March 2nd to March 13th. And we're extending this out because we want, this is when we're going to start to get the Chromebooks out to our kids, and we want to ensure they have access to a device and a means to submit. The grading window will open April 20th, and that will be open until the 24th, so teachers can get grades in. Report cards will be the following week, and we are in the elementary school utilizing a pass-fail model.
Okay.
Just for third quarter.
All right, and what about your seniors?
Seniors, well, the grades will be just exactly like I explained there.
Okay. All right. And just food for thought and something to think about, with us as a board, as a courtesy, could the district provide T-shirts to all seniors? Just a food for thought as a courtesy with everything that's going on, dealing with the seniors. Could the district, as a courtesy, say, thank you, we love you, and just give the seniors a Class of 2020, a T-shirt?
President is nodding his head, Gwen, I think he's...
You know, some food for thought has been very traumatic from them because their schools closed and they merged. They were displaced from their regular homeschool. Everybody either went to Erie High or somewhere. And it was just, they put a little smile on our faces to let us know that we're loved and not forgotten.
First, I thought you meant us elderly board members, Gwen.
No!
Okay, I get it, it's the high school seniors.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I do have another question, I apologize, to Sterling. Teresa, or Gwen, thank you, you made me think about it. So what about our seniors that perhaps are taking, do we have any seniors that are taking college courses through any of the universities, first of all? And then our AP courses, will they still be getting their college credits for those?
I do know about the AP, and AP is still on target to test down the road here. I'm not sure exactly what that schedule is. As far as the colleges go, I believe that they're still working online, but I will double-check, I'll double-check on that, I'm not exactly 100% sure.
Thanks, Teresa.
Sure.
One more, Mr. President, Angela, I just had a question because, like, my daughter, so I'm just going to ask you if it's appropriate. My daughter goes to collegiate, she had a teacher who, well, her teachers have been in touch with her very a lot. I will give them a lot of credit. They've been, you know, daily contacting her. But my question is, like, there's teachers that's telling her things are due. Now, I know I've talked to you about this before, Brian. I had a teacher tell her today, this is due April 20th. Okay, well, how is something due April 20th if we're not starting construction until April 20th? So like, she's getting, she's still getting told, like, certain things are going to be due. But, but even if they are due, like, is that not, does that not count up until April 20, or till after April 20th, or how is that going to work? Because, you know...
Yeah, right now, there's no require, everything is enrichment and optional until April 20th. So we will, again, follow up with that individual and make sure that we address it.
Okay.
Well, if that's it for the regular public session, we'll bring this to an end and call upon our able technician, Dawn, to put us into the mode in an executive session. I'm not sure who gets excluded, but there's probably not too many, is there?
Mr. Harkins, if I may just point out for the record that the executive session is for the purposes of personnel, and no action will be taken.
Okay. Can we say now then that this meeting has come to an end?